Who's on the line?
Nick Snyder.
Hi, Nick. Be just a second. Hi, Jody. And one more. Okay, shy person. All right, let's go.
Ready? Thanks, Dina. Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, excuse me, March 29, 2022. Time is 2:02 PM. This is our weekly business meeting. Attending are Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios, and at this time we'll take 30 minutes of silence. Thank you.
How about seconds?
Yeah, I think seconds would be better.
What did I say, minutes?
Yes.
Hours, I'm sorry. Thirty seconds of silence. Okay, then. So moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Alexia to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, but a request to move item 24 right after item 16.
Okay, that's the grant amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move that up to, alrighty. Okay, then. So the next item would be approval of the minutes?
I move that we approve items 1 through 7.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Moving on to consent calendar.
I move we approve items 8 through 12.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Okay, payables list, please.
I move that we approve the payables as listed for March 21st through 25th, 2022, in the amount of $570,602.40, along with jury panel payments in the amount of $4,093.37.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion is carried. First item in our business segment. Item number 14, bid opening number 2022-04, snow removal equipment, also known as SRE, an airport office building, sponsored by hopefully the FAA, and this is AIP 3-16-0010-052-2021, and this is for our airport.
So we have one bid. Swinton out of Spokane. And, let's see. All right, Schedule A, Snow Removal Equipment Building, $5,553,695. Schedule B, Airport Office Building, $3,294,000, sorry, $294,314, for a total of $8,848,009. Do I need to say the first one again, or did I say thousands on the first one?
I think you're okay.
I do all right?
Yep.
So I move that we acknowledge the receipt and that legal and airport have a chance to review it.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion is carried. Item 15, bid award number 2022-05, hydraulic excavator bid award for solid waste. John Phillips, JP.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Phillips, for the record. The solid waste department recently solicited bids for one hydraulic excavator for the landfill. Three bidders responded, including PacWest, Pat Pay Machinery, and Western State's Equipment. Only two of the bidders submitted completed bid packets. PacWest submitted a no bid. Pat Pay Machinery submitted a bid of $363,400, but this machine deviated from bid specs in several areas. Because of these deviations, it was determined that Western State's Equipment submitted the lowest responsive bid in the amount of $383,752.91, with zero deviations to the specifications. The total price of the bid with optional guarding, quick change bucket system, and a five-year fail-safe warranty was quoted at $421,261.31. This price is within the budgeted amount for this piece of equipment. So in summary, the solid waste department requests that the VOCC award bid number 2022-05 to Western State's Equipment for the purchase of a new hydraulic excavator with the options that I listed for a total price of $421,261.31.
Okay. And presumably, these bids have been reviewed?
They were reviewed by legal as well as the department.
Okay, so this is an actual bid award?
This isn't a award.
Okay. Bill, are you okay taking this?
Sure. I move that we award bid number 2022-05 for hydraulic excavator bid. What was the name of the company?
To Western State's Equipment.
To Western State's, as outlined by Director Phillips.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Thank you, JP. Okay, item 16, bid award, excuse me, for the Fairground RV Park Phase 4 with Stewart Consulting, Inc., and this is our fairgrounds. Alexia, please.
I'm sorry, you got to come to a mic.
Just get up, you want to get up to the mic?
Your favorite.
There you go.
There you go.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have received two bids. You guys opened last week. We've reviewed them both. And Stewart Contracting is when we are requesting that you accept the bid for the Fairgrounds RV Park Phase 4.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
Okay, and that's the 365-535? Okay.
Yep.
Motion?
I move that we award the bid for the Fairground RV Park Phase 4 to Stewart Contracting, Inc.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Thank you, Alexia. Okay, so we're going to move up item number 26.
24.
Oh, is it 24?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's a date change on the grant award.
Okay, so this is grant amendment, RV 22-1-28-1, project period extension, that's what this is all about, to June 30 of 2023, with the Idaho Department of Parks and Rec, and it's $470,500. The cash match is $24,965. Alexia?
We're just simply coming to you for an extension on this grant, and you should have everything you need to review.
Okay.
And it was run by IDPR already in there.
Okay. All right, then. Motion?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve grant amendment RV 22-1-28-1. It is an extension until June 30 of 23 for the IDPR grant for the fairgrounds.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. So moving on to item 17. Okay, bid award specification number 28022, notice of award for the bus stop improvements at Panhandle Health. That's stop number C15 in Hayden and the Hutter-Selti stop designation B as in Boy 3, Coeur d'Alene. And it's a federally funded project, and this is by our Resource Management Office. Jody, please.
Yes, we evaluated the bids for specification number 280222, submitted to the Board of County Commissioners on 15 March, 2022, and found interstate concrete and asphalt to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. It is our recommendation the board award the project to interstate concrete and asphalt in the amount of $236,655.
Okay, to interstate concrete, right?
Yes, interstate concrete and asphalt.
And asphalt, okay. Bill, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Go right ahead.
I move that we award bid number, bid specification 280222, notice of award for bus stop improvements with Panhandle Health, stop C15, Hayden and Hutter, Selti, B3, with Coeur d'Alene, federally funded.
The award goes to interstate concrete and asphalt.
And asphalt, yeah.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Thanks, Jody. Item number 18, Rural System Collection Agreement with Sunshine Recyclers, Inc., solid waste. JP?
John Phillips, for the record, again, the solid waste department recently solicited bids for a seven-year agreement for the collection and transport of solid waste from our rural collection sites located around the county. Sunshine Recyclers Incorporated was found to be the lowest qualified bidder and was awarded the bid on March 8, 2022. Since that time, the departments worked with our legal department to put together this final written agreement for your approval. The costs associated with this agreement include the following: $573,900 per year cost for the actual collection, a biannual fuel adjustment that occurs in March and September, as well as an annual CPI adjustment October 1 of each year. In summary, the solid waste department requests that you approve and sign this professional services agreement with Sunshine Recyclers for rural systems collection of solid waste. This is a budgeted service.
Fair enough. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the Rural System Collection Agreement with Sunshine Recyclers.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, JP. Item 19, another one for JP, Transport Services Agreement, First Amendment with NRC Environmental Services.
Again, John Phillips, for the record, this First Amendment to the Transport Services Agreement with NRC Environmental Services is specific for the transportation of waste from the transfer stations to the landfill. The solid waste department worked with legal services to put together this amendment. If approved, this First Amendment to an existing Transport Services Agreement with NRC Environmental would make the following changes. It would extend our current agreement that's in place by one year and allow for the following increases as well. An increase in the cost per ton by 2%. This is consistent with the original contract language and was okay by the legal department. The new rates would be 536 per ton for Ramsey and 666 per ton from Prairie. This also adds a biannual fuel adjustment to be calculated in March and September of each year. And this is specifically due to increased waste volumes and fuel, as well as miles driven. In closing, the solid waste department is requesting that you approve and sign this First Amendment to the Transport Services Agreement with NRC Environmental for hauling waste.
And we're within budget?
We are within budget.
Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the Transport Services First Amendment with NRC Environmental Services and solid waste.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Item number 20, contract with Rubrik Advanced Backup Solutions, structured for information, our information technology group. Grant, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Grant Kinsey, Network Administrator, for the record. We talked about this last week, the status meeting. This is a backup solution that protects us from the most advanced threats that are out there right now. The biggest one being when a network is infiltrated, the perimeter security is breached. The first target people try to get after is your backups to make sure that you have nothing to fall back on, and they started asking you for ransoms and things. So what this backup does, it's an immutable backup system, and what that fancy word means, I had to look it up. It means that once the data is written, essentially, it can't be tampered with. Even me, with the keys to the kingdom, I can't get in this thing and ever change the data until its self-expire is set. Self-expire means when we write the data to it, if we say it has to be there two years, it has its own internal clock that starts ticking down. It doesn't matter what rest of the world says the time is. It will not release that data until the time that we've told it it can. So we've invested millions in our cyber defense, in the perimeter, on each computer. We have endpoint security. There's other things that's going to be coming down the road that we need to do as well. All that said, this thing becomes our last line of defense if the worst should happen. We need to make sure that we have this thing to fall back on.
Okay.
And we've done a lot of research. We've looked at a lot of companies. We looked at this company six years ago compared to the one that we have now. At that time, they were both doing a very decent job. We went with the one that we have now for functional reasons. Five years, fast forward five, six years to where we are now. The one we have now has stayed very consistent with what it was five to six years ago. Hasn't exactly been as innovative as Rubrik, the company we're going with now, or would like to go with now. They really, really focus on this cybersecurity issue and done a fantastic job. They have some complaints that maybe that no one else is going to be able to make right now. So that said, what IT's recommendations the Board of Commissioners would be is to take some assigned fund balance that is available now or has already been assigned to IT and allocate it to the current IT budget so we can move on this as quickly as possible. The quote that we have currently for this system is $451,879.40. I would recommend to the board that you allocate a round number of about $470,000 for network incidentals. That'll be needed to make this thing talk. We're going to, we'll have one node here at the admin campus, one node at the sheriff's campus. The two will cross-talk to each other so that if one is ever compromised or failed, the other one is available. And that's going to take some more networking tools to make it happen.
Sure.
Again, that's what IT's recommendation.
Is this incremental backup or a total?
It's a total bare metal backup. It works with incremental technology. I don't want to waste people's time and blaze their eyes too much at this point, but what it does is it works like old-style incremental backups, but it plays out like a true full backup every day.
Okay.
And I know what you're asking, Commissioner. Incremental backups, historically, you would back up one full, and then you'd only back up the changes. The problem is if you needed something from in the middle of this stream, if there was any corruption in this data line, you would lose your data. So what this new technology does is it does it from the other end. It backs it up and holds, but it deduplicates the stuff that happened from before. So you still have a full backup every single day. But long story short here is that you're not dependent on the rest of those backups. You can go into any given day, and if everything else is gone, you can still get the data from that day.
Thank you.
And then this is over a five-year period. This is not for one year.
The five-year part exactly is, the way these backup systems work is you're paying for a service more than most of everything you're buying. You're, of course, buying the hardware, the massive storage area to put the data. That probably accounts for about 20% of the cost of this thing.
Sure.
You're paying for services. They have services called radar and sonar. What those do is...
Yes, it's fine, Grant. Thank you. Thank you. Dina, question. This is not a contingency issue, so do you actually have to physically open the budget, then, because of the nature of what we're looking at?
So my understanding is that we would appropriate current fund balance, assigned fund balance. We have $1.5 million sitting out there to appropriate, if you wish, for IT projects. So we would appropriate that amount of $470,000, and then we would code to the equipment and to the ongoing maintenance. It's my understanding that you get five years of maintenance in this one particular, you pay it all upfront?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So then he wouldn't need to budget for maintenance for five years in his budget.
Right.
It would just be a one-time deal and one month, so then that's five years. He would reevaluate.
Exactly. That's a very fair point to bring up. So we give the life of most any technological asset about five years. So in five years, we'll probably be at this same table again, talking about whatever the current technology is at that time. So that way we don't inflate operational budget. We just take care of a system for its lifespan.
Sure.
And there is quite a bit of savings just with this package. They've discounted it.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah.
So it would just be a capital purchase, basically, and then he would be good for five years. So we could code that all, do it on now, and then that wouldn't be a budget request.
Okay.
And it's also been built under the NCPA, the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract. So there would not be a need to go out for competitive bids at this point. That's why it is such a good deal. It's about a third of the price of what National Regional Purchase is.
A question. Are you anticipating that the ARPA funds would pay or compensate for this?
I am. Thank you for bringing that up as well. That was the idea. This has already been submitted to the ARPA project. I did get a response back from that task force that it is an approved purchase. At this point, if we waited for ARPA, that's all it would be, is a waiting game to see if, basically, when they brought the suggestions to the board, if the board would approve this as one of the approved purchases with ARPA.
Okay.
So essentially, we just pay back...
Can I make a clarification, please?
Fund balance.
Yeah, go right ahead, Jody.
Yes.
So the ARPA task force approved cybersecurity as an eligible pursuit. It did not approve a specific vendor. So in terms of procurement, we would have to look at the procurement to ensure that it follows two CFR 200.
Different issue.
Yeah, and bottom line, it's coming out of fund balance. So if it fits into ARPA and we can pay back fund balance, that's great, but we need this now, so...
And for reference, there have already been government agencies that have purchased this exact project under ARPA.
Okay. Good to know.
Okay, so now, Jody, not to belabor this, but are we talking about having, and maybe you already did, gone through a competitive bid process? Did you?
No, because it is under a national contract.
Okay, all right.
But just under national contract, they still have to go through a procurement process. So for purposes of clarification, the board can approve what they want to approve, but in terms of procurement, you're still required to follow a procurement process. And if it was done through the national contracting, then you just need the documentation to verify that it was done appropriately.
Okay, noted. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Thank you, Grant.
All right, then I move that we approve the contract for the Rubrik Advanced Backup Solution and with money coming out of IT fund balance.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Can I add not to exceed $470,000? And I.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Thank you, Grant. Okay, item 21, Weed Spraying Agreement with Panhandle Spray Services, Noxious Weeds. Nick Snyder?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Snyder, for the record. Before you, it was our annual noxious weed spray contract with Panhandle Spray Services in the amount of $49,934. As the board is aware, we utilize contractor spray services to assist with controlling noxious weeds on our county-owned properties, which is required in Idaho code. And this is a budgeted item in our current fiscal year.
Okay. No questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the weed spraying agreement, Panhandle Spray Services, for noxious weeds.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion's carried. Item 22, Grant Correspondence for Fiscal Year 22 Certifications and Assurances with the Federal Transit Administration, no match requirements, Resource Management Office. It says, Kim, but Jody, are you taking it?
Kim is on the wire. She'll be here just in a moment.
Oh, okay.
I don't think they can hear you, Kim. Hold on, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm a shy person that didn't answer before. I don't think you're all hearing me on my phone. So this is our FY '22 cert, some assurances. We are required to update these annually. And in order to submit any of our applications to FTA for our 5307 funds, we just need to have this updated in the system, so we're requesting your authorization to proceed.
Fair enough. Motion?
I move that we approve the grant correspondence for fiscal year 22.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Item 20...
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Item 23, Grant Application. COE Snow Removal Equipment, SRE Building. The grant application is with the Idaho Transportation Department for $300,000 and a cash match of $1,306,452. Stephen, go right ahead, please.
Realistically...
Because of what just happened?
Because of what just happened, yeah.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. That was a little bit more than out of the ballpark. That was in a different state.
It was. So as Cory and I were just discussing, would like some leeway with the board. We do need snow removal equipment. If the board would still be willing to sign this, but we modify the grant, still requesting $300,000, but look to purchase either a loader or look to roll this into the $359,000 that we're already getting from the FAA that we need to find a home for now, too. So we'll most likely advance other snow removal purchase equipment up faster if the board would be willing to have us just delete building.
Right. So I guess my question is, will the FAA go through with it? Because we've been told that you have to have the building before the equipment. Are they going to allow us to get the equipment, knowing that when people can build again?
Well, I'll argue with them later.
Okay.
I'll win that argument at some point.
Okay.
It's not going to be an easy fight.
Sure.
Worst-case scenario, we'll go down the path to start with of, we need other loaders and things like that first as well. We also need replacement plow trucks and snow blowers, so if that's a need, we have bays that can fit those.
Okay.
Multi-function equipment, we don't have bays. We'll see what we can convince them in the next few.
Okay. So then, Dave, my question to you is, the grant as it stands, I don't think we should sign that right now, but if we approve it with the changes, then can it be on consent calendar?
For next week?
For next week.
What, we just bring it back?
It has to be done by April 1. It's a deadline.
Which is Friday.
Yeah.
So we would just be affirming it by putting it in the consent calendar?
It's an application.
It's an application. Okay.
Okay, so Stephen, you're looking for $359,000. Is that it?
No, $300,000.
$300,000.
I'll get it back to you for your review today or tomorrow.
So where does ITD fit into this, or don't they at this point?
This is ITD's money.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's part of our 10% local match, so they usually do 5%, but they've come up with quite a bit more than 5%, well, on what we thought the project was going to be, so there's that.
All right, fair enough.
All right, I'll go ahead and take this if you're all right, Bill.
Sure.
All right. I move that we approve the grant application for, when the changes are made, for snow removal equipment with ITD in the amount of $300,000.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion's carried. Item 24, granted...
We did.
Oh, no, we did that one. That's right.
Yep, 25.
25, Development and Ground Lease, North AAL 2021-1300, Hangar Development, Riley, for party of Riley Creek, Riley Creek, Montana LLC. Stephen?
Commissioner Steve, here for the record. This is for a lease agreement on the north side. It's 4.277 acres. It's for $39,310.57. It does have a reduction of 50% for the first year. They're also installing approximately $200,000 worth of utility infrastructure into this as well, so it's a pretty reasonable reduction for 50% for one year.
So how does this fit into the other utilities that the airport was going to get paid back for?
This is the Gulfstream Road. This is on Gulfstream Road.
Okay, so this is still something that we are doing, and then they're paying us back the $200,000?
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. You okay with this, Bill?
Sure. I move that we approve the development and ground lease, North AAL-2021-1300, hangar development with Riley Creek, Montana LLC.
Second.
On the airport.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion's carried. Item 26, Financial Budget Policy 930, Request Purchase Approval for Capital Budget. Stephen?
Commissioner Steve, here again. This is a request for... Commissioner Steve, here again. This is a request for the financial policy 930. We received our pickup today, and we're just requesting to be able to, well, it took a year, to be able to purchase it, as well as to use either fund balance or actually, we will, I already know it will be over our estimated revenue for the year by approximately just under $12,000, as we've stated.
I would probably prefer the estimated revenue, and then at the end, we'll shake things out and see if you...
Absolutely.
Have to go into fund balance or not, if that works.
I have nowhere above our fund. Just the one lease, what we did estimate the lease before was not as part of the north side.
Oh, so that's a brand-new lease that you, okay. Thank you.
Good enough.
Yep.
Motion?
I move that we approve the financial expenditure for the pickup truck at the airport.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, motion's carried. Item 27, Financial Budget Morgue Trailer Funding. Dr. Keen?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Warren Keen, for the record, from the coroner's office. I wanted to bring this information forward to you that through peculiar efforts and cobbing together of various financial entities, we're able to fund the trailer that you approved last year in the, in the budget cycle. We have gotten state homeland security funding.
Sorry, just want to make sure your microphone's on.
Yeah, no, he's on. He's on.
Yeah, thanks.
And we also obtained money from Bonner County, from their state Homeland Security Program. We had a very generous contribution from Benhamaw out of their ARPA funds. And then we also, through your generosity and through your work, converted excess funds from last year into the system. And we sold one body cooler to help with the, the funding. We kept the other two body coolers until this trailer arrives. And once the check clears, it'll take about a week to get up here. And then we can sell the rest of the body coolers from the, the airport. And it was a tremendous effort from Dina and Julina, Tiffany, as well as Rachel, and now Sarah out at the OBM. And so I sent you the exact details in an email, and I don't think it came up on the, the project list here, but I wanted to let everybody know where we were at with that. It's, as soon as the check clears, then we will move forward with it.
Sure.
What was the total price? Was it $56?
$56,594.
Okay.
So...
With included delivery.
Do we have a statement of purpose yet, or an MOU, or anything? You were going to work on that?
We have, we have already had an MOU for the Mass Fatality Plan, which talked about mutual cooperation aid between the coroners of five northern counties. But some of the counties were unable to contribute.
Right.
And so I have a meeting with the other two counties on April 7th to develop that MOU, which will come before you for, for legal and for your authorization.
Okay, April 7th. Perfect. And then April 15th is our District 1 meeting. So I suppose if you need to address anything with them there, we could all be there, too, so. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You ought to take that around, and just post something on it. Drive safely and let people look at it whenever...
Open house doesn't sound right.
I can't drive it. I need a pickup.
You need a, oh, my goodness.
Which, we have talked with sheriffs department.
I was just going to say.
Need for that trailer to move from one place to another. They do have a three-quarter ton pickup.
What is it, what is it weighing?
Needs a three-quarter ton pickup.
Oh, okay.
You've done a great job of putting together this thing. I know now what your hat is for. You've been around going antique, and you've done it, so thank you.
You didn't have to have a big sale, but we did.
So, Dina, does this need a, an approval, then, from all the ones listed, all the?
Actually, everything's been approved.
Okay.
And the journal's been done. He's about $84 short, so I think she could handle...
Eighty-four bucks.
Okay.
I might have to come to policy 930.
All right.
Here we go.
Okay, so that's it. We don't need an approval there. Everything's...
Okay, because you're all done. Okay.
Yep.
Item 28, Financial Budget Public Administrator Contingency Funds Request. Deputy Treasurer, Jill?
Jill Smith, Chief Deputy Treasurer, for the record. This year was the first year that we had a separate budget created for the public administrator function that the treasurer's office is responsible for. These are mandated services. It's when people die without heirs or without a will, and without a will in the state of Idaho, the treasurer's office steps in and is appointed as the personal representative. So we were sort of spitballing. We looked at expenses, and we thought, $10,000, that'll be plenty. We're over budget, and we're not even halfway through the year. And these aren't services that are optional. This is paying for cremation. We've had a couple of houses where we need to have, we had to have one hazmatted. We get reimbursed for those services, but it still has to come out of the budget in the first place. So we had a $10,000 budget this year. We've already repaid roughly $7,000 of that at the end of the year. I don't expect that we'll be absolutely even, but largely, we will have been able to repay what's been spent. But because the, the revenue doesn't get netted against the expense until the end of the year, if we can't increase the budget using contingent, contingency funds, we're going to continue to be over budget for the rest of the year.
Right, overrides. Yeah.
Okay.
So we are hoping that you would allow us to use contingency funds.
Sure.
And we'll have a much better idea next year.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. You want me to take this one, Bill? All right, I move that we approve contingency funds up to $30,000 to be allocated in the treasure line item for the public administration function.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Thank you, Jill. So, item 29... It's not even on here, correct?
It's on the computer.
No, I mean, it's on here, but...
Right.
So, okay, so item 29 is a State of the County Address, which is next Tuesday, April 5th. It is a breakfast meeting at the Coeur d'Alene Inn. Anything you guys want to discuss?
I'll just be talking about the different groups that I, I liaison with and my general feeling about the state of the county.
Okay. What does that mean? Okay. Surprise.
Surprise.
All right. Leslie?
Pretty much same thing, but I'll add ARPA to my discussion.
Okay. And so I'm going to do the same thing. I'll speak to the groups I liaison with, and then I'll be adding or starting with finance.
Okay.
Okay, which is what I think we pretty much agree with.
Yep.
Anything else?
We do have a 9:30 meeting that morning, so once we are finished, we will need to high-tail it back.
Move it along.
Here.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, guys. You're not, you're not planning, are either of you, you're not planning a PowerPoint?
No.
Bill? Okay, I'll be doing one. Okay, that takes care of that. So moving on to status update.
So facilities expansion. We still have our April 13th presentation from LCA with the elevations.[1720.02]